Hello. Welcome to this candidate debate for the City of Mill Valley, sponsored by the League of Women Voters for Marin County. I'm Dennis Screamin with the League of Women Voters and serving as our timekeeper today is Lori Narden. Today we have four candidates that are running for a four-year term for two seats on the Mill Valley City Council. The candidates are George Gordon, Jessica Jackson, Dan Kelly, and John McCauley. The candidates have been invited to make opening statements of two minutes and we will start that process with George.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to express our views. I've been a resident in Mill Valley since 1968. Raised two children here. I moved my business from San Francisco to Mill Valley last year. I'd like to travel, explore different countries, but coming home to Mill Valley is always the highlight of the trip. Over the years, I've been an active participant in the community. Both my children were educated here, went on to UC Berkeley and USF. My recent trip to China has made me acutely aware of the necessity to maintain my unwavering support for environmentally sound practices and to safeguard the health and future of this community and the planet. I'm committed to see the arts and recreation thrive in Mill Valley and want your children, our grandchildren, and many future generations to continue to enjoy the healthy living environment that we have. Specifically, I'm a candidate for Mill Valley City Council and I believe that there are a few things that need to be addressed. One, pension reform. The association of Bay Area governments and Plan Bay Area, I think, needs to be addressed. And I think the Miller Avenue streetscape needs to be reviewed and possibly shortened. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Our next candidate is Jessica Jackson.
Hello. My name's Jessica Jackson. Mill Valley is a special place to me. I grew up there and I'm now raising my daughter there. I want to put my time and energy into preserving what is great about Mill Valley and preparing us for the future. First, I want to focus on resident engagement. I'm very comfortable with both traditional and new methods of communication and I want Mill Valley to make smart decisions about our communication opportunities. I look forward to ensuring that all residents are heard, informed, and have a meaningful opportunity to have their voices heard. Second, I'd like to prioritize pedestrian and cyclist safety. I will pursue a bike share program, ensure that we're investing in sidewalk maintenance and repair, and continue support of our successful steps, lanes, and paths program. I will also prioritize creating dedicated bike lanes so our kids can safely bike around their own neighborhoods. Finally, I want to focus on emergency preparedness. In Mill Valley, we live hand in hand with nature and we must defend our town against wildfires and other disasters by continuing to protect our fuel breaks and pursue additional flood mitigation concepts. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next candidate is Dan Kelly.
My name is Dan Kelly and I'm running for Mill Valley City Council. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to speak and tell you a little bit about myself. I've lived in Mill Valley for 14 years with my wife, Lyra. We have four children in the public school system. I volunteered for the Community Schools Foundation, KIDO, and have acted as the representative at both at Edna McGuire and at the middle school. I've also recently finished work as part of the working group, the Community Vitality Working Group, and the Arts Subcommittee for the General Plan Revisions. And in doing that, I saw the future of Mill Valley and I also saw the process of bringing people together from various areas with various points of view and using that knowledge base to really build and plan for the future. I'm very excited about that. I've been, 24 years, I've been a trial attorney in San Francisco and I've learned from that that there's always been at least, there's at least two sides to every story. And part of what I've learned how to do is to take those sides and try to bring a resolution without necessarily having litigation because I think litigation, to be honest, and lawyers do it all the time, but it is a very inefficient way to solve disputes. So what I've learned is that when you bring people together and look at those sides, you can make a lot of progress towards doing that. And those are the skills that I've built as a lawyer, as a successful lawyer in the Bay Area. And I think I can bring those skills to Mill Valley while helping the city council to fully represent all of the interests in our great town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And now, John McCauley.
Good morning. Mill Valley is a wonderful place. We have great schools, physical beauty, a vibrant arts community, a great library, a community center, and best of all, a balanced budget. This did not happen by accident. We have engaged, we have an engaged public, a history of skilled city council members who have led us to success. And we also have our challenges: local serving businesses leaving, pressure from developers, and the need to deal with public safety, poor roads, flooding, and sea level rise. Mill Valley has our tradition of city council members serving only two terms. We lose two very experienced city council members this November and the remaining three in two years. And that's one reason why this election is so important. Okay, so why me? I offer our voters extensive public experience. I know housing and land use issues, having served in the Planning Commission for the last six years. I chaired a major Subcommittee of the General Plan, Mill Valley 2040, the Committee of Vitality Committee, and have also served in the Miller Avenue redesign, Miller Avenue redesign to fill the needs of pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists. Having presided at roughly 200 meetings, I have done my homework, listened, built consensus, and achieved results. In addition to public service experience, I also offer voters business experience. I'm a recently retired partner and spent 35 years with PricewaterhouseCoopers, a large CPA firm. I successfully managed a 300-person team and $100 million budget where I built consensus and buy-in for tough decisions. I believe these skills transfer well to the public sector. I'm running for city council to ensure responsible management of the city's budget. I want to improve our neighborhood roads, continue emphasizing fire, public safety, sustainability policies, and promoting our local arts community. I support housing options for varying income levels, but I don't support large out-of-character projects. My wife Cindy and I have been residents in Mill Valley for about 30 years. Our two kids graduated from Tam High. My wife is actually a school district board trustee. Our roots here in Mill Valley are deep. I'm committed to preserving what makes Mill Valley special and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, John. Now we're going to start our general questions and the first question will be for Jessica. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer the question. Which are the most important issues for the Mill Valley City Council to address and what makes you uniquely qualified for the council compared to the other candidates running?
So like I said, I grew up in Mill Valley and I know what that community has been for the last 25 years. I moved back across the country from Florida after living in Atlanta in Florida to raise my daughter there because that community is so special to me. One of my favorite things about growing up there was that as soon as we moved from the city, my mom gave me a spare key to the house and a bike. And I was able to bike all over town, get myself to soccer practice, get myself to Boyle Park for tennis lessons. It was really important to me that our kids today can have that same experience of being able to be mobile in their community. Right now, some of our sidewalks have fallen into a state of disrepair and I think that they need to be repaired and maintained. I think also we need to have the dedicated bike lanes so that kids can bike around the way I used to. It will also help clear up some of the vehicle traffic, which has become a huge problem in Mill Valley, with parents having to drive their kids all over town for different events. Additionally, I think communication is an issue in Mill Valley. I think residents haven't always been informed as much as they should have and I would like to strengthen the communication opportunities, both through looking at more traditional forms like bringing back the biannual newsletter, and also for looking forward and perhaps developing a mobile application that residents can use to keep abreast of what's going on in their community and to give input to the city staff and city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. If any of you wish for me to repeat the question, I'll be more than happy. Next is Dan.
Well, I think the city council as a representative body has to look at the various issues from different places. And I too am interested in infrastructure and public safety. I did a lot of work with the schools and I believe it's important for the city to interact with the schools and help them so that working together, they can address some of the issues of safe routes to school, bikes, and other transportation issues. I do think because we have very different types of neighborhoods, I know there are people that are on the hill that can't ride bikes like I can. I live in the Alto Sutton area where it's flat and we can ride bikes and I love to do that every day. Some people, it's more difficult for them. So I think it's very important to have representative voices on the city council to look at those priorities and put them in order to make sure that we can fully help everybody to reach the best solutions that can be found. And sometimes, there's going to be times when things are not going to work out best for everybody. And I think part of my skills are making sure that I've heard the voices of the different people because it's not, you can't make everyone happy. And sometimes, you're going to have to make some really tough decisions. And I think as a litigator, I've been in that situation. I bring those same skill sets to the city council. So tough decisions are going to need to be made and I think they can be made, they should be made, and at the same time, it's very important that it's an open process that's very transparent to the citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And John.
Can you repeat the question?
I certainly can. Which are the most important issues for the Mill Valley City Council to address and what makes you uniquely qualified for the council compared to the other candidates running?
Thank you. Okay, so Mill Valley has historically been very prudent with regards to its finances and the way it's budgeted itself and that has done us good up until today. Looking into the next few years, I think there are some significant challenges that we face as a city. There was flooding, as we all know, recently and there's a report coming out, the Stetson Report, that was going to, I'm sure, result in pressure for additional infrastructure spending. We've barely kept up with our neighborhood roads and I'm sure we can get that into detail later, but the point there is that there are deferred maintenance elements with regards to the roads. We continue to have to make sure that our fire and our police, elements of the budget are well cared for. And so there's this continuing pressure that surrounds the area of the budget. So, you know, the reality is that when it comes to a town and we only have so many dollars to spend, public engagement is critical. I think we learned that during the Miller Avenue exercise. The first, the second version of Miller Avenue seemed like it was much more successful than the first and there was a tremendous number of people in the public who participated in that process. So I think it's really important to continue the discussion about the choices that we're making as a city with regards to budgetary matters. What I bring to that is deep business skills, having dealt with budgets for a long time and I understand elements of finance. And frankly, serving on the Planning Commission for the last six years, I've learned a lot about the importance of public involvement and the timing of such involvement and the need to get the word out. And I think those skills would serve us well as a city council member.
Thank you, John. And now, George.
Thank you for the question. Mill Valley has a few serious problems. The first being, the pension plan needs to be overhauled, especially the program called OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits. The City of Mill Valley owes $18 million to that, translation, they're underfunded by $18 million, meaning we have a shortfall and we have to come up with something to mitigate those debts. And they are debts, by the way. The second thing we have, and by the way, my qualifications for that, I run a firm called WASI, which is an investment retirement strategy company, and we manage retirement accounts. And in that capacity, we've been in business since 1973 and that's a long time. The other areas, and we'll probably get them into later, is we have a problem with ABAG and Plan Bay Area. The City of Mill Valley needs to extricate itself from these arrangements because they simply, it takes unprecedented authority from us and decision-making powers and transfers them to an unelected agency.
Thank you, George. We're going to need to move on.
Okay.
The start of our next question, we'll start with Dan. What training and experiences have you had that will help you manage the city's budget?
I've worked in professional theater before I went to law school and since then, I've been a lawyer and I've been a partner at a number of firms. And as a partner in the firms, we watch very carefully the budgetary issues. So I know that's a private use of a budgetary powers, but I think that translates well to city government as well. I think budget priorities are very important to set. I think it's important to continually look at those priorities and make sure that the money that you're spending is spent in an intelligent way and is actually making a difference because there are certainly a number of things that are on the list of priority items. And having looked at what the city council has put together in terms of the priority items for the next couple of years, one, particularly one, is the sewer issues, which it's not very glamorous to talk about the sewers, but they are very important to everybody. And I think taking those kind of priorities and making sure that we are constantly looking at those so that we're making smart decisions is one of the most important that you can do in the budgetary process. And I think as an attorney, I'm used to looking at a lot of data and a lot of information, but also looking at the human impact of the decisions that are made. And I think those are the particular skills that I can bring to the table.
Thank you, Dan. John.
So the area of budget is definitely in my wheelhouse. Having spent 35 years as a public accountant, I do have a deep understanding of financial statements and how they operate. I also had a responsibility of a budget I had to manage myself and therefore I understand the pushes and pulls associated with, you know, creating a budget and living by the budget, monitoring it, and getting to a conclusion with regards to the budget. I also, as I mentioned earlier, have spent a lot of time in city government, so I do understand what goes on in our town in Mill Valley. I have a sense of what the priorities are. And I also am very interested in continuing the communication that we have to members of the public so we can collectively determine where our priorities lie because we're going to have some tough decisions ahead of us. And then finally, one of the big areas, of course, is pension and other post-employment benefits or healthcare benefits basically for people who have retired. I have a lot of expertise in that area in my service to public clients. I was required to review and sign off and, you know, approve basically the quality of public pension disclosures, so I'm very familiar with those concepts.
Thank you. George?
Again, very good question. Thank you. I've run a business for the past 45 years successfully. I've budgeted for it. I've planned it, basically did everything I needed to do for it. When we talk about the budget for Mill Valley, I can read a balance sheet and an income statement. I know what's there and I know what they mean. We also have to deal with the revenues of the city. One of the problems has to do with, we have to, we have to guesstimate whether we're going to get the same levels of income and things of that nature. When we, when we look at what it's going to take to successfully get ourselves out of the pension system or whatever it is that we change to, we're going to need to realize how we're going to do it and what the expenses are that'll be involved in it. And I've been in the financial service industry since 1970 and that requires a lot of fortitude and thinking and planning and adjusting, which is really what you do when you do budgeting. So I have the qualifications, since I've been involved in that, for basically all of my business life. Thank you.
And Jessica.
Thank you. Mill Valley has historically made fiscally prudent decisions and I would continue to do so if elected to the council. As a longtime resident, I understand the community needs and I would be able to evaluate the impact of our prioritization in the budget. As an attorney, I frequently have to manage our case budgets and look at which items are most important to each of our cases and make some very difficult decisions. As a single mom, I also have familiarity with balancing a budget and I know how to deal with the tough decisions there as well. I've looked at our priority items and I've evaluated the infrastructure needs and the capital improvement project as two of the key budgetary concerns. Thank you.
For our next question, we'll start with John. The City of Mill Valley is in the final stages of completing the update of this general plan, which will guide the city for the next 25 years. How do you propose to implement it and refine it?
So I am extremely familiar with the Mill Valley 2040 general plan. I, as I mentioned earlier, was the chair of one of the three major subcommittees on the plan and Dan was, we worked together on it. We probably had 20, 25 meetings maybe on it of length. Then when the general plan process was completed, it moved back to the Planning Commission. We had four public hearings on it. I've been through every square inch of the document. I think it's a wonderful document. I think the city's done a really good job looking forward. The general plan basically has a series of sections. There are 37 total goals and 310 programs. That seems like a lot, but in actual fact, if you look at the detail, these programs are well-written, they're actionable. And one of the responsibilities of city council is to, on an annual basis, take a look at progress against those goals. And I am very vested both in what the city has come up with and in monitoring its continued development and success.
Thank you. And George?
Thank you. I've read the 2040 plan. It's a very thick document and my concern is that everybody has spent a lot of time planning for the next 20 or 25 or 30 years. There are some problems that need to be addressed today before we walk into, you know, 2020, 2040. And some of those, some of the, some of the plans in the 2040 document are going to need to be changed and somebody has to understand how those changes are going to be impacted. Thank you.
Okay. Jessica?
Thank you. So I've also reviewed the general plan and I'm really excited about the plan on a whole. I believe as it's being implemented, we're going to see some issues. However, I think my out-of-the-box thinking will help us come up with some very creative solutions to those issues. I'm particularly excited about the housing element. I think affordable housing is really important to our community and I'm excited to see that the city has taken this on and accepted it.
Okay. Dan?
Well, I'm very familiar with the 2040 plan and I think first and foremost, the process by which it was put together was an excellent process. It was a great experience for me, partially because, or mainly because, it brought so many different voices together. And at one point early on, there was a question about the arts committee, arts community, and how they were represented in this plan because coming from the 1989 plan, there were very few references to arts and how important arts are. And I think across the community, arts is a very, very important part of Mill Valley. It's a very important part of what makes Mill Valley special. And I was very fortunate to be able to serve on the Arts Subcommittee as well as the Community of Vitality Group. So I got to see new voices coming in, additional excitement and energy from a very important segment of the community. And I think in putting those together, certainly plans are meant to be changed. It's supposed to be a blueprint that helps you move along the way and I think this plan does it. And I think it also is very aspirational because rather than limiting ourselves to what can we do right now, it was where do we want to be? Where do we want to be in the future? Where do we see Mill Valley being? And I think this document, although it's a very dense document, I think it really does capture the spirit of all of the people that put in a lot of hard work to make it and put it together.
Thank you very much. September represents the National Preparedness Month and it's not difficult for any of us when we look and watch the wildland fires that are going on right now around the state and the country. This next question starts with George. Is Mill Valley sufficiently prepared for a major fire, flooding, or earthquake? If not, what needs to be improved and how do you propose making changes? Who else would you involve?
One of the, one of the things that we always have to do is, is try and measure what catastrophe we are prepared for. And in doing that, we rely heavily on our fire department, our police department, our community services. And for the most part, I think Mill Valley is sufficiently prepared for, if we can refer to this as this, a reasonable disaster. If anything gets out of hand, we're connected up to the, to the other cities in the county and we're connected up also to the state for relief. In any event, if we experience something along the lines of what took place in New Jersey, I'm not quite sure how all of it would work, but it's the American way to sit back and figure out what went wrong and put it back together and start again. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
So this is a question that's very near and dear to my heart. I remember in 2005, I was actually at my mom's house on Sycamore Nelson and I woke up early in the morning to nurse my very young daughter at that time. And I opened the front door because I heard the rain coming down and I saw both my mom and my brother's cars essentially covered in water. They both were lost to that flood. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the Stetson plan. It's clear to me, the Stetson Report, it's clear to me that we don't have adequate mitigation for floods at this moment and that we're going to need to make some infrastructure changes to have it in the future and prepare for floods in the future. I think when it comes to the fire, we need to be very well-prepared since we're a cul-de-sac community. We need to protect our fuel breaks and make sure that they are maintained and that people have access through the steps, the lanes, the pathways, the fuel breaks, the roads to get out of town when it becomes necessary.
Thank you, Jessica. Dan?
Well, I think I've been happy and very fortunate to meet with a number of people that have really concentrated on disaster preparedness. And, and it's not just fire, although fire is a very, very important one. There are a lot of people in the, in the community that are very invested in it, that have done a lot of good work about putting preparations in place. And I think we can always do more. And I do think, I'm concerned about our sewer system particularly because it's one of those things that is out of, out of view. But it's a, it's a system together that really could be a potential danger. And I think, one of the things that somebody said the other day to me was about, not so much about the immediate preparation for a disaster that may last two or three days because I think, I think there's a lot of people and I think the city is prepared for that, but what happens after that? How do you bring the businesses back online? How do you plan for something that may be more disruptive than a two- or three-day disaster? So I think there's always more things that can be done, but I think we are, we have, we're lucky that we have people that are so interested in it and so dedicated to it that they're throwing themselves into it. And I applaud their efforts and I want to do all I can to help.
Thank you, Dan. John?
Okay, so I was born and raised in Oakland. I think all of us who live in the Bay Area have an extreme sensitivity and understanding of the importance of preparation for, you know, bad events. And we're all aware of all the bad things that can happen to us here in the Bay Area and particularly in Mill Valley. I am exceptionally impressed with our Emergency Preparedness Committee and the work that they have done. In fact, coordination between the fire, the police, the schools, which is very important because the schools are heavily involved in this and are actually a place of refuge for us as a, as a community. We've made tremendous progress as a city. In fact, the drills that we do here in Mill Valley, the most recent one, that was actually up in my area in the Cascade Canyon, are a benchmark that is not just considered locally, regionally, it's actually a national benchmark. If you look at who does it best, we're looked at as some of the people who have done it best. Now, that doesn't mean we can rest in our laurels and there's still plenty, still to be done there, but I would say that, you know, our city is well-aware of this exposure and we've done a fair amount to help protect us. Oh, and one other thing, CERT is really important. And in fact, the, most members of CERT are actually of the older generation and it would be great if we can get some young people in CERT too because if I got a two-by-four on top of me, I'm hoping I've got a 30-year-old down the street who can help lift it off of me. So, thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Jessica. Addressing climate change, what steps should the city take to make it greener? It is just introduced an ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags but not yet adopted it. What other changes should the city make? What else should be banned or required?
Thank you. Mill Valley's most precious resource is our environment and preserving it should be a top priority. I believe that's reflected in the current council policy of zero waste by 2025, the plastic bag ban that they've begun working on, the new electric vehicle charging station which was recently opened, and our joining MEA. Environmental issues have always been really important to me and in And in fact, during my fifth-grade year at Park School, I helped start the Park School recycling program. Now, as an adult, I still value the, our environment, and if elected, I'd like to continue to work to protect our environment by adding additional solar panels to city buildings, such as the sewer plant, increasing opportunities for residents to recycle while they are out downtown, bringing a bike-share program to our city, looking at developing a recycled water program for the golf course, expanding our community garden, and exploring ways we can better protect our streams and creeks. I am proud to be the only candidate in this race endorsed by the Sierra Club, and look forward to helping make Mill Valley greener.
Thank you. Dan?
Can I have a question again?
You certainly can. Addressing climate change, what steps should the city take to make it greener? It has just introduced an ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags, but not yet adopted it. What other changes should the city make? What else should be banned or required?
Well, I think, first of all, I think it's, it's important to look at what the City Council can do. And when you say banned and required, it's, those are scary kind of terms. But I, but I absolutely agree with the, with the plastic bag ban. I think it's an idea that, I know we moved very cautiously on it, but I think now that we're doing that, I think it's important for the city to move into a leadership role. And, and sometimes that means taking some risks about what you want to do. But I think it's important to do that. And I think climate change is something that, it's, it's there, it's not going away, and it's something that I believe that if you make incremental changes now, and important changes now, it may be incremental in some sense, down the road, they'll pay huge dividends. And I think it's important to continue to engage the community, to pull out more ideas about how exactly we can address climate change and how it may impact the city, particularly with the, the water system and our marshlands and, and our wetlands that are, that I think are very beautiful and bring a lot to the city in terms of what it looks like when you drive into it. We need to continue to protect those. And I think, most importantly, we need to continue to work with other agencies, the county, to make, and other jurisdictions, to make sure that we're leading the charge and, and working together on a regional basis. Because I don't think the city alone, it can take a leadership position, but it's not going to solve the problems.
Thank you. John?
Okay. So greenhouse gases, where do they come from in Marin? There was a study that was part of the 2040 General Plan that looked at Marin County in total. About 60% of greenhouse gases in Marin come from transportation, about 20% from residences, 12% from commercial, and then the rest is the rest. So looking at those parts of it, as far as transportation is concerned, Miller Avenue is a so-called complete street. It was carefully redesigned to promote bike-peds in addition to car transportation. And I think that's going to help in terms of getting kids out of cars in terms of the way they get to school. A study said that 29% of the total driving that we have in Mill Valley is dropping kids off at school. And that makes sense to me, because if you look at the city, we have three rush hours, one in the morning, one when the school's let out, and one in the evening. So I think there's opportunities there. Also, with regards to roads, there's a study from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission that talks about the fact that if you repair roads, that helps lower greenhouse gases. And then as far as residences are concerned, that's 19% or 20% of our total. A few years ago, on the Planning Commission, Karen Musserdin brought before us a proposal called Build It Green. And Mill Valley, after we studied it, we were proponents of it, we thought it was a really good idea. And what Build It Green does is it raises the standards above the standards that were already in California. And I'm a big supporter of the idea that Mill Valley should take a lead. I'm also for the plastic bag ban. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And George?
Well, if, what the City Council can do is it can, it can decide what to encourage people to do and what to discourage people to do. For instance, we're about to do a major overhaul of Miller Avenue. Why don't we make one lane each way a dual-purpose lane? So that what we end up with is, we end up with the, the left lane being cars only and the right lane being cars and bicycles. It's going to do two things for us. One, it's going to, it's going to change the necessity to widen Miller Avenue. In other words, to put a bike lane in there, we're going to have to widen it, and when we widen it, we're going to take out the trees, which probably is a very bad idea. If we do the dual-lane structure, what we'll end up with is we can keep the same space on Miller Avenue, we keep the trees, and we, we encourage bike lanes. So what we end up is we, we, we encourage people to ride their bikes, and in doing so, we're going to drop the use of gasoline. That's the way to encourage it. You want to discourage things? We have to sit down and decide which of the things that we really want to be told to stop.
Thank you, George. We'll start with Dan with the next question. Since two of the candidates brought up Miller Avenue, let's use that as our next question. How do you proceed to go forward with the Miller Avenue Plan?
Well, first of all, studying the history of Miller Avenue and the first time that the Miller Avenue Precise Plan was put together, I, I think people have acknowledged that part of the problem with it was that the people, that there was not a lot of community involvement at, at the earlier stages, and so it looked like it was being imposed on someone from above. And I think with the streetscape plan, I think it shows how the community learned and, and the City Council learned from previous experience and brought more people into it. I, I like the idea of the streetscape. I like the idea of recognizing different portions of the, of the street have different kind of unique characters. But I also think it's important to, to have a unified approach, because Miller is the, the main artery in and out of town. And so it's very important, I think, for that street to really work. And I've seen some things in other communities where they've made ways of actually slowing traffic down, which makes it safer for bikes to be on that road. Because I know being on there now, and I ride my bike for, for local trips, on Miller, it, cars are so fast, they're driving so fast on that street, that it becomes very, very difficult and very hard for bikes that are, like me, recreational, I'm not a, I'm not a road biker, to get, to feel safe. And so I think it's important to do that, and I think that's another part of bringing more people out on the streets in terms of walking and biking, because I think that is what helps Miller Avenue to, to continue to get better.
Thank you, Dan. John?
So, Miller Avenue, I agree with what Dan said with regards to the improvement between the first version of it and the second version of it, and getting community involvement in the, in the more recent version. I'm actually a member of the community who was deeply involved in that. I, I sat on that committee. I've got hundreds and hour, hundred, probably hundreds of hours invested in that program. And I can tell you that the, the public was extremely involved in Miller Avenue. Miller Avenue actually is not being widened. It does have six-foot, six-feet-wide bike paths on both sides of it, but the, the public zone is staying the same as it was before, it's just being used way more efficiently. It does have street calming, calming into the, into the, into the neighborhoods. It is extremely well-throttled, street by street by street by street. I, for one, am really anxious to see groundbreaking on it, having seen so much investment from the public for such a long time. The standard, the status of it is right now that the city has engaged an engineering firm to do the so-called 90% engineering studies. So this is the very detailed study. Next step, once that process is complete, is to put the work out to bid and start staging the process. And I think we're about to see some real action in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. George, expand more.
I'm extremely familiar with the Miller Avenue project. In 2007, I attended a, a meeting at the, at the community center where the then-City Council presented its vision for that street, and the town went ballistic. And that was, that election proved to be the turning point. We managed to stop the Miller Avenue Precise Plan. And what gets put in place is the Miller Avenue Streetscape. One of the mistakes, I believe, was made in that process was, they basically opened it up to the public and said, "It's a wish list. What would you like to see?" And the result of it is that they designed something which has every bell and every whistle and everything in it. And at this point in time, the city of Mill Valley doesn't have enough money to even pave Miller Avenue. So all of the improvements and everything that everybody has been talking about, it's, it's going to take a lot more work. Thank you.
Jessica?
Thank you. I agree that communication is essential when planning any of the changes in Mill Valley, and Miller Avenue definitely falls within that. I think it's very important to remember what we learned from the 2007 Miller Avenue Precise Plan, and make sure that there's always an adequate opportunity for community members to be involved from the very beginning and to be fully informed. I also think it's really important to mitigate traffic on Miller Avenue and to make sure that we're not pushing cars into the Sycamore or Tam Park neighborhoods. Growing up on Sycamore myself, I know that a lot of kids use that as a route to get to and from school. And I think it's really important to maintain as few cars on that road as possible. I also have some safety concerns about Miller Avenue. I actually just heard of an incident the other day where a nanny crossing the street with a child in a stroller was almost hit and had to physically pull the stroller back right there by Whole Foods coming onto Miller. So I think it's really important to address some of the safety issues as well on Miller.
Very good. We're going to start with John on this one. Some individuals, especially cyclists, want the old Alto Tunnel to be reopened to create a path from Sausaloa to Cordero Madera and much of the rest of the county. What is your opinion?
So, in general, I'm very much a supporter of, what am I saying? I'm very much a supporter of assisting our infrastructure to be accommodating to bikes. I think it's good for us from the perspective of greenhouse gases, from health, and all those kinds of things. With regards to the Alto Tunnel project itself, I think there's way too many unanswered questions at this juncture to, you know, to form a conclusion with regards to Alto Tunnel. I think a lot of things need to be answered. I know there's research that's going on right now, and I think we have to find out, you know, what that research shows in terms of property rights and stability of the tunnel and those kind of manners, before we can really move to a next point to make a decision as to whether it's right or wrong for the town.
George?
I think it would be great to have, but at this point in time, I think it's too expensive. I think the figure I, I remember being measured about was some $30 million to do it. If we can figure out how to do it at a, at a much better price, I would be, I'd encourage it.
Jessica?
Thanks. I also believe that we need to fully understand all of the ramifications of reopening the tunnel before we would consider doing so. I look forward to learning more about the research on the Alto Tunnel that's being currently done by the county. And I think that, in the end, it's going to come down to a balancing between the potential property rights issues and the community's interest in having another way to get in and out of Cordero Madera for bicyclists.
Good. And Dan?
When I first moved to Mill Valley in 1999, I, we, my wife and I rode our bikes through that neighborhood, and we always wondered where that path went. And having to come, cut across Lomita though, finding how dangerous that really was and how difficult it was to get up over into Cordero Madera, when I found that there was a tunnel there in the past, I thought, what an interesting thing to look into. What, what can happen with that? I remember going to a, a meeting, actually, of the Bike Coalition, and they were very excited about looking into it and finding that there was actually some federal money that would help underwrite the cost of looking at it, to see how much had been collapsed, what kind of shape it was in, and what could be done. I think, I think it's a, it's a, it's a neat project to explore. I think for the very near future, though, it's just, it's not high enough on the priority list to sink a lot of money into it. So at this point, it's something that I think we could aspire to, because I think it would be great to connect the communities and have another way to get to Cordero Madera. But I think at this stage, it just, a lot of work needs to be done to study it first, to see what the feasibility is and what the actual costs are, before we proceed with something like that.
Thank you. This will probably be our last general question, and we'll start with George. What is your position on design and amount of affordable housing, and what are your views on meeting the state mandates?
Affordable housing, it's always been a very interesting phrase. Affordable housing in Mill Valley is defined as how? Is it what the average city employee could afford? Is it what a fireman could pay? What are we talking about? Are we talking about housing for senior citizens? There's, there's so many different variables in that phrase, affordable housing. When we look at Mill Valley, Mill Valley has almost zero buildable space. It means that there's no place that you can put a project of any size of it. And one of the problems with the ABAG and the Plan Bay Area is they've isolated tracts of land which they believe we should contend, we should consider. And one of the problems in doing that is it takes the local control out of what goes there and what ends up being the right thing for us. It's a difficult question, and it's, it does not have an easy answer at this point.
Thank you, George. Jessica?
Thank you. So this is another issue that's near and dear to my heart, and I'm a strong believer that Mill Valley needs homes that are affordable for our seniors, workforce, and young families like my own. The Mill Valley I grew up in was more economically diverse and provided housing options for a variety of income levels. Back then, there were state and federal subsidies for construction of affordable housing. Those subsidies are no longer available, and we need to find creative solutions to provide housing options. Some of these solutions include infill through second units and units in additional mixed-use zoning like we have downtown. When I moved back to Mill Valley during law school, my daughter and I needed an affordable place to live, and I looked at the Picklewee Apartments, which are very well-maintained. But the long waitlist forced us to move elsewhere. Having affordable housing is important, and we need to be smart about how we create housing options while maintaining our small-town character and protecting our natural resources. There's a longstanding concern over the development in Mill Valley, and Plan, Plan Bay Area contributed to these concerns through their rushed response to SB 375. Over the years, the Mill Valley City Council has taken steps to keep development to scale with the Mill Valley community and has pushed for language precluding the loss of local control and local land use decisions. If elected, I will work to ensure that we do our part to provide housing on a size and scale that fits with our community, and that all residents are given a meaningful opportunity to make their voices heard in the process.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, I think affordable housing is, is a very key issue, especially when you're talking about economic diversity in a community. And I think as a community gets less and less diverse economically and otherwise, it becomes more and more isolated. And I think it's very important to have housing that, that seniors can, can use and that workforce can use. And, and I do think, though, that there aren't a lot of places to put projects. And I don't think it's the, the idea, and I, and I believe that some of the state-mandated one-size-fits-all solutions don't make sense for Mill Valley. This is not a place where you can build a huge project and, and expect that people will use mass transit. I, I know there's ideas about coordinating where people live with how they get around and, and trying to have people live in town that work here. I think that would be excellent, to have teachers that are in the schools be able to live here in town. I think that would make the town a much better, much better and richer place. So I think, I think it's important to keep local control. I think it's important to continue to look for opportunities either through infill or second units that do make sense. But I, I don't agree with that, that ABAG or other government joint powers, groups that have a kind of a one-size-fits-all that doesn't address the idea of Mill Valley community. The population growth in Mill Valley is mainly through larger families and larger households. And I think when you define something as all households being the same, I think that, that's where you get into some trouble.
Thank you. And John?
So Mill Valley does have diversity currently, and that's one thing I think that makes us, that makes us who we are, you know? And it's very important to me personally. Right now, about a third of the units in town are apartments, and because of their size, by their nature, they are more affordable. And if you use, if you use $75,000 as a measure of income, about a third of our total population in Mill Valley, 18% in apartments and 17% in homes, have income at that level or below. We also have almost 340 units in town which are income, which are supported units for low income. Now, you know, the reality is, though, that with the popularity of our town and the increased pressure for development, it's difficult to maintain, to continue to maintain that level of affordability and diversity of, within our housing population. And I agree with what our other... And I agree with what our other people have said here today, the other people running for office, that, you know, I think we've done a very good job as a city and through our city leadership in dealing with the housing element, which is basically within an inch of being approved currently. And its strategy is to keep units small, to support infill property, continue to support second units and the like. And I think we can both meet our required allocations, which are coming down from Planned Bay Area, but at the same time, control what we want in our town. I think we've been very successful with that in our housing element.
Thank you, John. This concludes our questions. Before we go to your closing remarks, let me share a little information. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th. The last day to register to vote is October 22nd, two weeks before the election, or to re-register if you've moved since you've last voted. Requests for absentee ballots must be received by the Elections Department by October 28th, one week before the election. Early voting opens at the Civic Center, room 121, on October 7th. If you go to the League's SmartVoter.org website and enter your street address and zip code, you'll be able to see your own ballot with links to the candidates, issues, ballot measures, and information about the voting process itself. In addition, our website, MarinLWV.org, has many other online resources for voters to research facts and campaign financial information. Now the candidates will make their closing statements of 90 seconds, and we will start with John.
Oh, okay. So, I didn't come with a prepared final statement. I thought we would have, over the course of this hour, explored a lot of the issues in town, and thank you, those questions were excellent. So I thought I'd introduce myself just a little bit more to the voters. As I mentioned earlier, I was born in Oakland. My parents, my father came from Ireland, so I'm a first-generation American. We came from modest means. I went to Cal and worked my way through college, and then started my first job, which turned out to be my only job. We've lived in Mill Valley since 1984, about 30 years now. Both my wife and I have been very involved in this city for quite a long time. My wife Cindy is extremely involved in the school system. You know, I love bike riding, I like cooking, I probably should do more bike riding and less cooking. I'm a big Niner fan, so, you know, those are things that are important to me. My big message that I think I've already displayed is that, you know, I think I bring a lot of knowledge of the city, having been very involved for many years. I've got a good financial background, and I think that's helpful. And I think that's part of the reason I've had so many, you know, important endorsements. You can see my endorsements on my webpage, www.mccollieformillvalley.com. I appreciate the time today, and I hope to get your vote. Thank you very much.
John? Dan?
Well, I believe in Mill Valley. We are very fortunate to live in a beautiful and friendly place. And I fell in love with it when I first moved here, and I'm still in love with it. I think it has a wealth of people and, that are interested in and actively involved, and I want to tap into that. And I want to bring those people and those ideas to the city council to help make Mill Valley stay the way it is and continue to get better and better. I do ride the Golden Gate Transit bus to work every day in the city, so you might see me walking from the bus stop, or you might see me riding on a bike. I have a Pooley, which is a big dog, looks like a mop. You might see us walking that around, too. I'm, I'm happy and honored to be running for city council, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Jessica?
Having grown up in Mill Valley and being an active parent now, I'm really excited to have this opportunity to serve our community. Being a human rights attorney has allowed me to develop many skills that I believe will make me an effective council member. I will contribute by thoroughly researching issues, creating consensus, and communicating effectively with the community, city staff, and my fellow council members. I've spent my career fighting for issues I care about, and I care about Mill Valley, which is why I decided to enter this race. I'm excited to have the endorsements of Congressman Jared Huffman, current mayor Andy Berman, the Sierra Club, and many other former council members and residents. I'm ready, willing, and able to bring a new press, new perspective and a fresh generation of ideas to our city council and help us keep Mill Valley a great place to live and raise our families. Thank you so much for your time. I humbly ask for your endorsement and your vote on November 5th.
Thank you, Jessica. And we'll close with George.
This is my third time with the rodeo, so to speak. I ran in 2007, 2009, and now again in 2013. When I ran in 2007, I will admit, I didn't know a lot. And by, by saying I didn't know a lot, I didn't know how Mill Valley politics worked. I was taught, and I've learned quickly. I believe I bring some very important skills to this future council. I've worked in the retirement industry for the past 45 years. I know that system backwards and forwards. And I know how to, I know how to change things so that they will work, and we can, we can get out from underneath some very onerous future costs. So, think about it. I will, I will probably see you around town, and feel free to ask me anything that you'd like. And it's, it's an honor to be a candidate for city council of Mill Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our debate for the city of Mill Valley. I want to thank our timekeeper, Lori Nardone. And on behalf of the League, I want to really express appreciation for the four of you for stepping forward and trying to really make a difference in your community. It means a lot to all of us. Thank you to the voters for watching, and please vote.